All right, we call the meeting order. Roll call.
Scott Chieble.
To Newington. We have a call. We're going to change the order slightly. We're going to take area variance that's number three, the one that's first there, we're going to take that last. Because we don't have anybody coming to talk with that one. There's no more public comments. We'll just do that one at the end. So the people over here can have their variance reviewed and then they can go. They don't have to stay around necessarily for that. So we're going to start with, I think neighborhood housing services are looking for an area variance with relationship to sign. Why don't you take the mic and tell us who you are and what your proposal is?
Hi, I'm Chow Pham with INHS. So our proposal is to add a sign that's 72 inches wide, 40 inches high, to install at the mobile home park right here now going to be renamed to Compass Manufactured Home. Manufactured Home Community. And so the, by the zoning regulations, the sign can only be nine square feet. And so we're requesting it to be 20 square feet on, you know, one on each side to allow for visibility along West Seneca Road.
Is there presently a sign there?
No, there is not.
Okay. And where is this going to be located in relationship to the road setbacks and things like that?
Yeah, so the sign will be installed south of West Seneca Road, sort of in between. There's a row of mailboxes there. So it's going to be right in the middle of where the, there's a clearing of trees and then setback 30 feet from the pavement to avoid a ditch that runs east and west along that road.
So it's going to be more than 15 feet away from the road?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Because initially, I think you want-
Yeah, initially it was 15 feet and then we got out there and there was a ditch. And so we didn't want to install the sign in the middle of the ditch. And so 30 feet does, is right outside of the ditch.
Okay, so what you're looking for is a, is a variance, you have to get a, did they have to get a permit? Did they have to get a permit for the sign?
Yes.
Yes, and as part of that permitting process is to get the variance for the sides of the sign. That's the only thing you're looking, that's different from what's in our Seneca.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
What is the zoning there? That's resident, I don't know what the zoning is there.
Residential two?
It's R2.
R2, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, is that residential?
Right.
It's residential two, which has quite a bit of restrictions.
I'm just reading the sign ordinance right now, so.
Yeah, I went through the whole sign ordinance as well.
Yeah.
Does it address the fact of really a mobile home park, which is residential, as different from a neighborhood like Wix Street?
Right.
Or Tamara?
Yeah.
Doesn't treat it differently?
So you're, just so I understand, well, we can talk about this later. So the sign is, it's 40 inches by six feet?
It's six, yeah, 40 inches this way and then six feet wide. And it's going to be installed, the top, from ground to the top of the sign is six feet.
Okay, so just like, so it's not really 24 square feet, it's going to be six times three and a third, right?
Right.
Three square feet both sides.
Both sides combined.
Oh, we have to, oh, we have to, can we have to combine them?
Yeah.
Oh, got it, okay. I wasn't following that piece, but okay, all right, okay, didn't know that.
And you determine the size of the sign based upon speed of traffic on that road?
Correct, yeah, we worked with signage, client, not client, the store to kind of ask for recommendations on the minimum size of text, which has to be five to six inches tall in order for it to be readable on a 45 mile per hour road. And then two to three inches is doable. So we do have text lower than, you know, the five or six inches, the smallest text is about two inches.
And that was, that was the recommendations, what sign rail?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you looking for them to create the sign for you?
Yes, they are.
Other particular questions right now for the point?
I just have one, did you check and make sure that it's not blocking any of the drives? Some people, it doesn't block their vision if they pull out on second.
Yeah, it's right in, so it's, there's, there's two driving, you know, where you enter on the south side of the park.
Yeah.
But it's right in the middle between those two intersections.
Oh, okay.
And it's 30 feet from the road.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So a car would be in front of that. That was a good point.
Got it, okay.
We have any, yeah. This, this is a stupid question maybe, but maybe not. What is the purpose of the sign?
The purpose of the sign is just to let everyone know that there's a new owner and then a new name for the community.
So when you say everyone, do you mean the residents or the community?
Just the community at large. And if anybody passes by and they want, they're interested in a rental or moving there, there's a phone number contact to.
Okay, so it's an ongoing identity.
Correct.
More than just the change of ownership?
Yes.
And I guess just to follow it, I mean, had you considered doing some temporary signage that was more of this announcement and then maybe reverting to something? And the reason why I'm going there is I'm just wondering if, how much visibility is, I mean, if you live there, you know where you're going, right?
Yep.
Perhaps if you're visiting, I don't know, I'm just wondering if the sort of roadside signage is the best way to promote it as opposed to other social media and other ways of promoting where you are.
Right, so right now, I mean, we'd like to have the sign permanent, but it's not the best location. And there's other areas on the site when we start doing renovations next, next year. We would like to propose that, but right now those locations, because of the topography, it's not, they're not great locations now. And so right now this is the best location given without, you know, doing any large site work. And then we, we have, you know, release marketing news related to that. But we are planning on adding more wayfinding signage later next year.
And that's a good question. That's a question I think for just the board in general, because I don't know, are there rules about the wayfinding signage? And like total signage allowed?
Yeah.
Relative to, like, this is, I just worry that you're using, maybe using up all your signage, but maybe, maybe not. Maybe there are allowed other way, smaller wayfinding signage?
Yeah, there is. If you read through the, the sign ordinance, the difficulty we have here, as I see it, is mobile, a mobile home park, which is the only one we have, which we put in, it's all special designated area, some of its needs were not addressed because it was a grand covered land and nobody thought we ever changed. You know, it was always all those parks and they were putting a name on it and everybody just knew it and that was, that was, so. And then as you read through the sign ordinance itself, it's three, four pages, you'll see in other regards, they tell you. So you can also add additional signs, like entrance sign, because the largest sign you can have is if you're a business and you put it in your window, you can have like 60 square feet as long as it's a percentage of the size of your building inside your window, because that's a huge sign. But once you get outside of it, and there's nothing in the sign ordinance that addresses necessarily the uniqueness of a mobile home park in a residential area. As opposed to like a doctor's office that's in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
I read through it twice today, but we're looking for that and trying to see. So there's things that define a commercial space, which seems more of what this is, a commercial enterprise, which allows for a certain sized sign, major sign, and then minor signs as well for directions, like entrances and exits. And they're smaller, two, three square feet, I think it was, four. So we'll get into a discussion about that. Good question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right now, there's not even names to the roads once you go inside. So those are some of the additional signs that we would like to add in future.
And you're not planning on single legs and single legs?
No.
They're just both?
Both two-way, right.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions? I'm going to open up for public comment. Can I have a motion to open public comment?
I'll make a motion, we open up the public comment.
One second. All favors say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries. You may or want to make a public comment? Can I have a motion to close public comment? I have a second. All favors say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay.
Can I start with?
Yeah.
I, I just want to disclose that I, as a, in my professional life, have done work for, if like a neighborhood housing. I have no connection to this particular property and I don't think that will vary my judgment in any way, but I just thought I would disclose that.
All right. Well, I'll start out here. I, when I looked through this today, I was trying to figure out where, I wasn't sure, I didn't know they were an R2. But I see this as more of a, it's like quasi-commercial in a way. And so the, the sign, in that case, it's 32 square feet, I think, right?
Yes.
32. And, and I also wasn't interpreting this, it was only like, that included both sides. Because that intuitively doesn't necessarily make sense to me, because all the signs on Main Street are on both sides, right? So I don't see this as being, you know, my, I don't see this as being a, like, I'm okay, I'm fine with this. I don't have any more questions.
You don't see this as being a big issue?
Big problem, I don't see this as being a big issue, right?
Yeah, if you look at, you're talking, if you look at section 702.4, signs permitted in a commercial mixed use or industrial district. That's where you get the 32 square feet for a sign freestanding and doesn't exceed 15 feet in height. And it talks about projecting signs and things like that. When you go up to 702.1, signs permitted in all districts. Well, you have to go to 702.2, because that's with a permit. You can do a temporary sign of 32 square feet. That's for a real estate development. So what you're saying, you're doing something that's very temporary, you know, because you're, you're building a project and you want people, you can do a 32 square foot sign. But that 702.2 doesn't apply really, it doesn't seem to apply to this project.
Right.
And then you go to signs permitted in residential districts and we're basically talking home occupations. Those are signs for home occupations for use other than home occupations and no part of freestanding signs, which should be closer than 15 feet. So there's your 15 feet, quote, because it's in a residential district, but it's all talking about home occupations.
Yeah.
And this is not a home occupation. And then you get to 702.0, 702.1, and you get all districts without, without a permit. This is what you just do without asking anybody's permission. 32 square feet or less erected by a public utility. So a public utility can do that without even any permission. Or a museum, places of worship, libraries, can't be more than six feet in height. So what we have is a sign ordinance that doesn't address this.
Yeah.
Has a lot of detail and, and they missed that. They missed that in there. So it's something we're essentially saying, let's apply the commercial standard to this property.
I would, I would agree with Scott, that you apply the commercial and use that as our attachment or the scope of the variance. And what's being proposed meets the commercial or is this double sided as an issue? Is that a variance or is that?
I think we would be safe to offer a variance if you're going to agree for 40 square feet over 32. I think we, we need to stick with 32 as the total to a maximum of 32 square feet. We've had this conversation over the years of other signs and, you know, I don't think in the definitions, it addressed it, if I remember right. Science size, you know?
I mean, I would make an argument that if it doesn't address it, that the double side is not an issue, right?
Yeah.
You don't want to see one side of it.
Right.
And in theory, you have a 32 square foot sign.
I mean, you think about it, I mean, if it's two side, I mean, if each side counts, then it can only be 16, so I guess that's, it can only be four by, four by four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I would say if it's not addressed in the definition.
Yeah. Well, look at, on the other side, if you look at the home occupations, it's six square feet, so that's both sides, that's only three square feet. That's only like, I don't know, it's a square root of three, not very much. It's tiny.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Let's walk through the five phases. Well, let's see, making determination, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to nearby properties would be created by the grandparent's?
No.
No. All the properties are part of the property. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance? Yes, you can make a smaller sign, but now you're limited to what you can put on the sign to be readable.
Right, yeah.
You know, I mean, if you're going to put a sign that can't be read, now you're causing a problem. People try, by trying to read a sign, they can't read it. And so the answer is no on that, yeah. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. 40 to 32, I don't think that's reasonable.
I don't know, no.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No, your question about sight lines from pulling out is not going to be an issue. That would be environmental issue. If you're going to fill in a ditch, if there's no place for the plow trucks to push their stone, so the answer is no. Will the alleged difficulty was self-created? Yes, it was self-created. They bought the place. I'm going to argue that it wasn't self-created, because they didn't write it down. Let's not get into that type of last one. Ready, made you one, maybe some of these things, these holes will be addressed in the new one. And the updated. Okay, so you have your answers for all of that? Excellent, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance for the sign as requested.
Okay, I have a second. I have a second then. All, any questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
We'll get the paperwork to you in the package with Tom when he gets that.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, now we have the area variance request from Robert McCarthy and Anitra. All right, Anitra, this is all right. Tell us what you're doing and what's going to-
So I'm Anitra McCarthy, this is my husband Rob, and we own the property at 206 East Main, which is right next to the Burnberry. And we started renovating the interior, it was my grandparents' home, and we started renovating the interior. I, I want to say about two years ago. And somewhere throughout that process, we put a metal storage trailer unit at the end of our driveway to hold some of my grandparents' belongings that needed to be removed from the house, but also some of our tools. We're trying to do as much of the work ourselves as possible and it's just taking a long time. A lot of it was, I would say, we had about a year delay because of COVID, we couldn't get contractors in. It's just been honestly really difficult scheduling people, having them show up, all of that kind of stuff. And so whenever possible, we're trying to do a lot of the work ourselves, he's in the trades, so that's been working for us pretty well. And we like having the, the unit on the property because it's secured, we can monitor it, we have surveillance, which we haven't had in other locations, which was also an issue for us. So anyway, the, the current section says we can have it there for a period of 12 months. And it's going to be extended beyond that, so we're asking for an extension. And that's, that's our, our case in a nutshell.
Yes, that's some questions.
I don't have any. I don't have any this time. They explain what they're going to do.
So, so are you, my storage container that's there, so you're keeping your, your tools, you're keeping building materials? Where are you at in the, in the, in the, in the project?
We're, we're close. We're, we're in sort of a home stretch. We do have to schedule any of the trades to help that happen. And that's so difficult, but we're, we're moving, we're moving towards that. So I, I think, I met with Tom last week and they extended our permit for another year because I, I don't see a moving and, you know, getting it finished before the winter. And-
Are you living in the home?
Yeah, for, yeah.
Okay, so you're doing-
We're living in a teeny little apartment. You should have been in this house, you were so bent. It's kind of quite, quite challenging for us all around.
And has Tom been right while doing the inspections?
Yes, yes, he's been involved every step of the way. Another thing I, I think is important to mention is we really don't have neighbors. So we have Burnberry on one side and we have a pond on the other that we really can't even see anymore. And in our backyard is the school and they have about 10 of those storage, exactly, except for bigger. We have the smallest one they have available, but- Well, I mean, whatever, but that's what we see in our backyard, so, you know, they're like, they're like, they're like siblings. But anyway, so that's, that's-
Any questions? Open for public comment?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we open for public comment.
Okay, you have a second. Say, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion to close public comment.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
You have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. You guys can have a table, you can hold on to the mic if we have a question, but you don't have to stand there like you're a doctor. Yeah. Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward in the sense that it's a one-year and then if you want an extension, you have to ask for the extension, it has to come through us and Tom came for it.
Yeah.
Unlike a building permit, you can brand an extension on building permit. So I feel confident that if Tom's good with how the progress is going and I talked a little about the progress of the project. And if you're doing any projects, you know, it's likely to turn into tradespeople at this point.
Yeah.
I've, I've been waiting six months for it to work for my client. Every Friday, they say, it'll be there on Friday. I'm like, why do you keep telling me that? It's just wishful.
Six months.
I mean, this is the first time in my time in the zoning board, we've ever had somebody actually ask, ask or request a variance for this. So I was impressed that actually, somebody actually, because usually these things just stay around for-
Normally, normally there's just fines being issued by Tom, he tells them that.
Yeah, okay.
He has been working with Tom, so he came up for it.
Yeah, he's good, yeah, yeah.
No, normally.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yes, your failure to comply sticker. Well, let's walk through the five.
Yeah.
Variants is the rules. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood? No. Could the benefit be achieved by some other method feasible to the applicant?
Nah, right, it would look worse if they dumped it on the ground.
Right, or you know, if you rent someplace, someplace else, now you're back and forth. Whether the requested area variance is substantial? No, they're just asking for a new one. Will the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? Yes. I don't think so.
No, I think you're right, yeah, I agree with it. Yeah. Yeah.
I will defer to you and we'll see.
Okay.
Are you doing the last? You're not getting in your way all the time.
I'll let somebody else make the motion this time.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to extend.
I have a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion carries. Join the storage. The last thing I want to do. All right, last issue for the night is for West Academy Street. They put a carport in their front yard. And we already had public comment and the, and the issue got tabled, so can I have a motion to bring it off the table? You have a second? Any questions on that? All in favor to take it off the table, say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. I wasn't here for the conversation. Anybody want to bring me up to speed with what you're thinking? I haven't driven by the property, I've looked at it.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't, I think that, that, well, part of the reason we, we tabled it was because we just, we, we didn't get it until we, we got here that night. It wasn't, and it wasn't like a simple one, it was one we felt we should think about and then we got a chance really to look at it or whatever. So that's basically why we tabled it, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, and I'd probably rate it's more of an issue than anybody, hesitation about it for the, for that. It was harder than it was.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we really want your, your design.
Well, well, I, I, I look, I look at the property, it's that, it's that, it's that tiny little neighborhood in there, where everything is craning close together. Everything's on top of everybody. I bet there's not a house that's in setback compliance, no.
No.
In any regard, and it's large sizes are large. Yeah, I, I asked Tom about the carport that was already there, that small little carport that's on the front. I said, did they flip that up? No, they, they bought the house prior, the previous owner put that in, says, and I can't find any permitting that allows that. So you have-
It would have been before the, it was probably before 1972.
No, I think that, I think that one, it doesn't look that, I think it was the 90s. And that was, that was a question that I had, it's a sketchy, like, was not permitted.
Yeah, so, so-
And I think Tom also raised this issue of whether or not we were actually, should we grant a variance for that, to get that sort of on the books?
I would, I would be, I would be more open to letting them have their new carport- I would I would be I would be more open to letting them have their new carport. Kind of the idea, take down the old one. That's not permitted, that's small, I don't know if the new one is the same size, I don't, you know, because you don't have the fear to ask that question. They're out of town and weren't gonna come back to put that back.
Well, the the one that's there, I went by there today, it's actually not that small, it fits two cars, it's actually substantial.
The other one's probably the same, they're probably trying to put the same in.
Well, I think one of the questions we had, they have, the part of the reason we had the discussion was we were not, you know, there was some debate about it. They have that carport, they actually have a carport around back. And so.
Down below?
Down below, there's another carport out behind their house. And so they need, yet what's that? Carport number three, and so.
Can you actually drive down below?
Yes, you can, because it's a driveway that gets paid driveway that goes down, I think you have a boat or something back there. There's apartment in this house too.
But they said that the front carport, the existing one, was used by that.
Yeah, so.
So they're looking to provide coverage for themselves, specifically for the boat.
That's what the new, the new one is for their boat.
For the boat?
Yes.
Boat?
So, and I think, you know, the concern that I raised, if you look at that street, I was looking at. Literally like four houses on either side of the street, that's it. None of those houses have apartments. At all, and now this is gonna be one that has three carports. It just seems a bit. Extreme, like if the others happened and because the sites are so small and everybody just wanted to offer some creative solution. To solve an issue of apartment, that's that's one thing I fully get at, but this is something.
Was it was it this application where their neighbor signed off and said?
Oh, yeah, making out in support.
And to me, that's a huge thing, if the neighbors in the neighborhood say, yeah, let them have a carport, that should weigh heavily. Sure, because they're the ones who live in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Well, but it was only one neighbor, and but there was only in in. I mean.
Oh, so it was one neighbor and then the other applicant who was here said, was it supportive? She wasn't a neighbor.
Well. That was Hannah, she was just having me at the meeting, right, that's right, so she did, you're right, it was, but. You know, there's already, I mean, there it's. We do have the zoning laws, it means they're here for a reason. And it would be a substant, it would be a substantial variance because it, you know, it's not gonna be fifty feet from the street. There's already, there's there's no reason, like, they have this carport around back, I mean. You know, I would like to have a carport at my house in the front too, you know, but I I can't put one there, and I'm sure lots of other people would too. And so it's, this is a really substantial variance because it's right in the front yard, it's not like it's. You know, like, we had a carport over on Elster on Pennsylvania we gave, and that was more like they wanted, instead of fifty feet, they wanted forty feet, so that forty feet setback. But this is like right in the front yard, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so it is, you know, and there's already one there, and you know, I mean, if everybody had carports up and down the street, it would not look, it would look.
Well, you guys feel differently, just emotionally, would you feel differently if they were building an attached garage to their house that extend for?
No. I think my concern also is that you have a house and you have two carports that actually overlap the house. If I'm not mistaken, it's not that they're even to the side of the house, it's like, where, when this is all done and done, where is the house? When you see two cars and the one carport. A boat. And a little bit of lawn, and this house is so tucked. And it's, to me, it's. It's out of character to the streets. The street is sort of out of character with the rest of Jonesburg. But it's such a weird. Anomaly even on that street, which is definitely an anomaly.
Are we allowed still boats?
You're not allowed.
Well, I think somebody brought up that they're just throwing the boat there anyway, so this doesn't matter.
In the driveway.
In the driveway, so it's a matter of like, cover over it, and to me, that's just like, you're right, like, are they even allowed to leave the boat? Really, we should be doing the variance for the boat. Initially, and then the next question is. Cover boat, right, and and I would argue. There's other more temporary ways to cover a boat, just, you know, there's coverage, shrapnel or type of things. That aren't so permanent, and so the variance goes with the property. The carports that last thirty years.
Is it in parking? Where it talks about what you can have parked where, because that's significant. The use of the of the structures. I think it's.
What section are we looking in?
I don't know the way they. They redid this. Is parking just listed in the list of things? Residential sections. It wasn't separate. Parking, no more than, is this in residential? Free or no? Yeah, residential. No more than one commercial vehicle, maybe garage or apartment in the new line residential, it's glowing in which it's all I could assume, parking space for each. Outdoor storage, we know outdoor storage of rubbish. Well, what is the carport defining that to be an accessory structure? I don't think. That we have anything that defines what can go in or under an accessory structure, though all accessory structures are designed to be in the backyard.
I mean, I would argue, I I don't care, but it's the store above the car.
I mean, when we, when you buy a property, you buy the property. Subject to to the existing zoning, you know that when you buy the property, that there is zoning laws in place. And that might limit what you want to do on that property at some point, and so. This is, you know, maybe something just, you can't have so many carports on your property in the front yard, and maybe that other one should have never been built. But I don't think we could force somebody to take something down probably once it's already been.
No, I think we could, we could say you have one, use it. The way you want to, is the only.
Yeah. And they may have bought.
Art where there's no coverage.
Right.
But I don't know, where are you sitting, where is this?
That's a manufactured home.
That's under.
I don't know, though, I think with manufacturing.
I think that's in like the trailer park.
Yeah, I think that's in the, there's actually a. Yeah.
Compass. You know, accessory buildings, again, that tells you where they can put them. I'm not seeing anything in this here.
Second, second, seven oh eight talks about accessory buildings. Any resident, this accessory building shall be located at five feet from any side door rear hotline.
Yeah.
It doesn't, how is it not?
Because they have to be in the backyard.
They gotta be backyard.
They can't be allowing any, but some accessory building.
They're in on page, in section three oh two, it shows the. It, well, no, it shows where the, shows the front setback, which is fifty feet. They have to be in the rear, yeah.
Yeah, it's poorly worded, because it's, I I would prefer it explicitly said must be.
Yeah. It, yeah, could have said that too. Yeah, right.
Yeah, I know how I feel.
So maybe we should walk through the test.
Yes, we we should walk through, I'm not saying, I went through all the, I just went through all the definitions. To see, you know, if it talked about, you know, storage. And I'm not seeing anything. I may be thinking of something that was a conversation at one time, writing the zoning, but it's, I didn't see it, so fire tests. Oh, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to nearby properties be created?
I would say yes.
I would say yes.
I would say yes, yeah.
I would also add that just because a neighbor is not offended by it, doesn't necessarily mean. It's not.
I think it would have to be a large scale whole neighborhood, and everybody's saying yes, because they're all thinking the one, yeah, the same thing, and it did get. But I agree with you. So yes on that, whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue?
Yes.
Yeah, their storage can go in their other carport.
Yeah.
Well, you can also store a boat somewhere else.
Yeah. Yeah. You could store it down to fairgrounds. There's other places.
Yeah, the fairground does lots.
Your, if your property may, I mean, that's the way it is, like, you just, you buy a property, you have to live within the the scope of what they can do, and. And sometimes you're just not big enough, you can't store an RV back there or a boat, so you gotta rent a place, it's just. That's the way it is.
Like the community doesn't want you parked in the driveway. You have people who have rations in the apartment.
Right, right.
Okay, so the benefit could be sought in another way, yes, is the requested area variance substantial?
Yes.
It is, it replaces the entire thing in the front yard.
Yeah.
Is the proposed variance have an adverse effect, impact on physical environmental conditions? I mean. The environmental, is it gonna principally change where water flows? Sightlines for driving, the environment itself, are they cutting a bunch of trees down and? No, I don't think it changes the environmental.
Yeah, it's more visual.
Right, that's the, that's the, number one is like, how does it change, you know, what we like about the neighborhood, and number four is, does it actually physically change the nature of the neighborhood? So probably no on this one, it doesn't do that. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? I think Scott's saying it is, because they knew what the property was involved.
Yeah.
In this sense, if it wasn't, they didn't get, they didn't get sightseeing. I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we we deny the the variance request. For the. Carport.
Okay. Okay, other comments or questions, discussion? If your arguments are reasonable, as to. All in favor of the motions we've denied the variance, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. General, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Oh, we have to adjourn the meeting, so motion's it, the new second, minus second, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed the same, motion carries.
Did you imagine how many times people have left meetings for an entire month?
Actually, the the. It actually.
So maybe it expires?
It actually, our package is. And that's what.
Turn your microphone off again.
You're always welcome, this can be all of you.
Yes. Appreciate it.
It was nice to have a whole agenda.
And one in paper.
I gotta go help my son buy a sport car. And then he wants me to install it this week. And I'm gonna wait until I have a ton of stuff.
Take care, guys.